For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have an item on the regular agenda that we will be pulling and continuing at a future. Call to me, we'll pull item number three of the regular agenda. So that will decrease it to two items on the regular agenda tonight. I'll request a motion for an amended agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
We have a motion in a second for the amended agenda, removing item number three of the regular agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda is hereby approved. Don't believe we have any presentations this evening. Has anybody stepped up with any public comments or inquiries? No? Skipping right along. The consent agenda tonight is approve payments and dispersments. Accepting donated funds from Equity Lifestyle Properties in Simran Park. Accepting donated funds from the Fields at New Perspective. Approve Lake Demontville and Olson Lake Association Grant Requests. Approve Lake Jane Association Grant Requests. Approve pay request number one, final for the 2025 striping project. Approve pay request number one for the 2025 mill and overlay project. Approve pay request number two for the 2025 crack seal project. Approve request number two for the I-94 lift station and force main improvements. Approve pay request number two for the Reed Park parking lot improvements. Approve pay request number three for the Stillwater area school district utility improvements. Approve pay request number five for the 2025 street and utility improvements. Approve release of warranty security for legacy at North Star Fourth Edition. Approve to hire administrative assistant, public works for Public Works and Fire Department. Approval to hire building instructor. Approve 2026 pay scale. Approve 2026 paid-on-call pay rates. And approve East Metro Training Facility Amendment Joint Powers Agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Support.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, moving into the regular agenda, I'm happy to ask the local, the group from ULI that came and worked with the city of Lake Elmo and give our TAP presentation. Should be all queued up for you there.
Just wanted a quick intro. This project, something we worked on for several months, getting it set up. And then obviously here for two and a half days, it's a really important questions that we asked of the group. And we're really excited to present this to the group, council and everyone watching today. Also want to add that this is a first step of developing the 180 acres. And this will continue to come back to Planning Commission, EDA and obviously the council. So just really excited to share this with everybody today.
Thank you, Director.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm John Slack, representing Urban Land Institute this evening.
Mayor and members of the council, I'm Mark Hauge, also co-chairing with John for the TAP panel.
Great. Just for ease of getting through the presentation and getting to the recommendations, I'm going to skip ahead a little bit here in the slideshow. So sorry about that. Don't mind me. Here we go. All right. A lot of information that I passed through is just really information about Urban Land Institute, our process. You know, what led up to being here in Lake Elmo and then subsequently some of our analysis. A lot of that information you'll find in the final document that should be sent to you here shortly for your review. So I'm going to start with the guiding principles. The guiding principles were developed on the second day of the TAP after a lot of these stakeholder interviews were concluded. These guiding principles represent some of the key findings that really drove some of the recommendations that the ULI TAP group came up with. So I'm going to quickly just read through these. First is really maximize community benefit. So the opportunities to add jobs, potential services, housing options, as well as improve fiscal strength within the community was something that we really thought about. Maintain overall image and character. This is definitely something that we heard a lot as part of our interviews with community residents and stakeholders. People really highlighted the natural beauty, the welcoming gateway along the corridor. They really love the sort of the rural character. And so something that really informed a lot of our thinking. Next was establish design and performance standards. And I think a lot of this, rather than being really restrictive, was more about reinforcing that rural character, that natural beauty, the landscape within Lake Elmo. Preserve future flexibility with any type of development project, especially with a large amount of land that you are looking at here. Being flexible during development cycles, you know, responding to developers and finding sort of the right fit, the right type of project that fits within the site. Advance sustainability and resilience. Again, this I think is something that really reinforces the idea of the natural beauty, the native landscaping. Ready and responsive to the market. This is really about being proactive and being adaptable to market cycles and market changes. Build internal capacity. This one was really focused in on city staff and potentially the need long-term as development starts to happen on the site to think about bringing in additional people to help support all that potential work. Integrate open space and trails. This was another key finding that we heard from a lot of the community residents. It's really about connecting this 180 acres to adjacent areas. And then lastly was effectively manage transitions. And this mostly had to do with a lot of adjacent land uses. Some of the land uses that are going to be proposed as part of our planning effort necessarily aren't compatible with adjacent land uses, i.e. industrial land uses directly adjacent to single-family. So just being mindful of how we create some separation, some setbacks and some buffering. One of the things that we talked a lot about is how this site can contribute to the overall city and to the village itself. From the standpoint of contributions to the city, again fiscal and economic benefits, this is increase in tax base. Think about increasing population, more activation, attractors and services. So again, jobs, retail, services, destinations, bringing more of that into the community. Providing additional housing options. We heard from some stakeholders about life cycle choices. A lot of people, based on the conversations we have, grew up in the city, they still live in the city. Maybe they moved away, but they want to come back to the city. And so providing those different type of housing options is really a good thing. And then also price points, providing a range of price points. Thinking about this site as a gateway. It's really prominent as you transition from Oakdale into the city. And so really reinforcing that gateway presence. And then again, really about green space network. It's about this bigger, broader connectivity. And then some of the benefits and contributions to the village itself. From an economic standpoint, it's just providing, you know, essentially more residents, more opportunities for people to come into the village. And then that physical connection via trails and roads. Jason started to mention, you know, some of the study questions. We really lumped these study questions into bigger, broader themes. So the first one was about market feasibility. So what are the development trends that you're seeing on comparable properties? What economic incentive would be most beneficial for use of the site to have tax abatement? Mark will talk a little bit about that. The local benefit. So what land uses will generate the most property taxes? And are there current conditions that could affect this? From a community role standpoint, what kind of requirement strategies could help the city put in place and encourage community participation? We have a little segment on that. And then phasing and timing. Pros and cons to dividing the site or selling as one property. Should the site be offered in phases? What would a phased development strategy look like? Is now a good time to sell the property? Does timing affect how it should be sold? And what is the preferred disposition method? These are all things that we will highlight as part of our presentation. So starting with really the site, you all know the site well. We had lots of conversations during our TAP with you and stakeholders about the site. This is an illustrative image, sort of representing the overall recommendations that we came out of our process with. I'll note that a lot of these recommendations, especially for land uses, were driven by not only the expertise on the TAP panel, but then also many of the conversations that we had with the stakeholders, which included brokers and real estate agents who had a lot of really great information about market conditions, what companies are looking for from the availability of sites within the region. And then that really affected and informed sort of our approach to developing this overall concept. So I'll just start from the right and go to the left. The most southerly parcel is a parcel that we really identified as a parcel that could support a variety of different land uses. What you're seeing here on the screen represents an industrial use. So we think that industrials is definitely a land use that would work well on the site, but residential also work. And I'll highlight that a little bit. As we move into the center parcel, just essentially just south of 34th. This was a parcel that was identified by many of the brokers and real estate agents as a really, really good industrial parcel. And so after sort of going through alternatives and having discussions, we are showing industrial and/or office showroom as the primary use on this site. And so fairly large site, so you're seeing that there's quite a bit of square footage of industrial or office warehouse uses that can happen on the site. But it's a really good site that supports those potential types of uses. I think from a phasing standpoint, and not to get too far into it, but parcel one is the furthest parcel to the south is the parcel that's most ready to go. It's a parcel that has utilities in place and you just have to work on access. Parcel two, the middle parcel, most likely would be the next parcel to go. But it's all dependent on getting utilities into that site underneath the railroad. Parcel three, the most northerly parcel, was a parcel that brokers, real estate agents really identified as having an opportunity, especially along 34th, to have some commercial. You can see that we've connected a road through the middle parcel and the most northerly parcel. That intersection that's being created there, whether it's a roundabout or a traffic-controlled intersection, is a really valuable commercial parcel because it literally sits at the intersection. I'll also note that a lot of the brokers mentioned that your current public works site parcel is a really valuable commercial site as well. And so one of the thoughts that went through our minds during our time on campus here was what if that Lake Elmo Public Works site actually moved to that first parcel in the south? So we have commercial along 34th. As we transition through the middle of the site, that most northerly site, there is a natural sort of land break. There is a depression in the landscape. Water looks like it would move through that space. There is a wetland basically on the west side. And so what we looked at doing was actually transitioning from a commercial use to a residential use. And so what you're seeing in the graphic here is a little bit higher density residential, potentially four-story apartments at the edge of that break. So facing towards the south and then transitioning into a lower density, which would include townhomes. So those are the smaller sort of brown colored buildings. And then transitioning into single-family. We have a variety of different single-family. The single-family closest to the south are smaller lot, single-family. And then the single-family that's most northerly on the northern boundary would be essentially pretty standard lots, a little bit wider lots. Here's the plan. It's probably a little bit small on your screen, but again, just really representing the most southerly parcel, the middle parcel and the north parcel. Another thing to highlight is the trail system. So you can probably see a set of black lines that potentially move from east to west or west to east. Looking at creating sort of an integrated trail system that connects east and west and north and south to adjacent areas. We heard from the neighborhood directly to the east that, you know, around the time around Halloween, it's really challenging for the children in the neighborhood because they really can't go anywhere outside of the neighborhood. And so they were really looking for opportunities to create some connectivity. They were also looking for an opportunity to set back any development on the most easterly edge of our site. And so you can see that that's been accommodated. And then there's a integrated greenway system. So we have the greenway that flows through the most northerly site and then starts to move north and south along the eastern edge of the site into the lower parcels. For that very first parcel, the most southerly parcel, as I mentioned, we looked at a couple of different alternatives. This is showing heavy industrial. And when we say heavy industrial, the way it was explained to us is literally just outdoor storage. And so this was mentioned as part of our conversation with the brokers that if you had an available heavy industrial site, that would be really marketable in this current market. They also mentioned if you were to create a spur off of the railroad, you'd have one of maybe two sites in the metro. And so the opportunity to think about heavy industrial on a site like this, because it's buffered, you know, it's set back and it's large enough to accommodate a use like this is something that should be considered. And then just another option was housing. You know, maybe it's the opportunity for workforce housing. I think the site's large enough with all the setbacks from the creek and the adjacent areas. You could probably get anywhere from 80 to 120 units on the site with parking. And so just another opportunity to potentially bring in another style of housing at a different price point. Last couple of slides here for me, you know, we just included some different images of character of the different types of building types that potentially you could see on site. Obviously, the building on image is probably pretty recognizable to all of you. You know, it has a farm-like character, peaked roof, you know, the white siding. It has a very unique style that feels of this place. And it would be nice if some of the retail components that we identified were aligned with sort of this character. The images below just really show what the inside of those retail establishments look like. Second set of images really focuses on industrial, you know, industrial, large-scale comes in many different shapes and forms. I think the images, the two images on the bottom, especially the one in the lower left-hand corner, feels maybe a little bit more appropriate, more earthy tones. A little bit of articulation in the mass. You know, these tend to have really long facades. And I don't know, I potentially would probably avoid bright colors. And so something that feels more earthy and more tonal. Just in precedent, images of multifamily. This is really of the scale that we were thinking, you know, three to four stories max. Again, the architecture is very simple, some articulation, the facades, even though the building on the right is pretty long, doesn't feel like it's one massive building. And the colors are pretty simple and earthy tones. And then some examples of single-family and multifamily townhomes. So the two images on the right represent townhomes. Again, peaked roofs, you know, colors that I think are reminiscent of some of the character of a lot of the homes that you potentially would see in Lake Elmo. And then the images on the right, single-family homes. These likely represent maybe some of the smaller lots that we had identified. And then my last slide here, as part of our conversations, we talked about bigger and broader connectivity. And so this is a really simple diagram, but it just really starts to identify how the 180 acre site, which is on the far left, potentially could start to make some connections to your new athletic complex site, which is under discussion or design at this point, which is that blue box in the middle. So the opportunity to connect along, you know, 34th or potentially an opportunity that's a little bit north there. Through some parcels that you don't have control over, but potentially long-term, might be a nicer way for kids and families to be able to avoid riding on the highway or walking on the highway and go through the community to get to that new athletic complex. And subsequently, the connection to the downtown village. And, you know, from the primary intersection of the 180 acre site to downtown village, I think was like less than three miles. So it's a pretty close proximity. With that, I'm going to end it over.
Sure. Again, my name is Mark Hauge. And I, among a couple of others on the panel, are developers. And so we kind of viewed our job as making sure that we could ground the designs into reality and look at market feasibility and make sure that what we're presenting can actually be built and to give you some good, solid numbers that you can use to kind of base your decisions on. So this slide attempts to gather all of the components that was shown in the earlier slide. So the first line there is the southerly building, assuming there's 230,000 square feet of industrial space. And we identified what the land value would be. In that case, since you already have utilities there, we estimate the value, if you were to put it on the market immediately, at about 3.4 million. And then what we tried to do is extrapolate if somebody were to buy that and build a building or two buildings equating to about 230,000 square feet, what would be the property value used for assessing and determining the taxes and what the revenue would come back to the city? And I've got a slide that talks about the city's revenue coming up later. The central parcel, what we're calling parcel two, we looked at that with the idea that most developers today, if you're developing industrial, start with kind of a nominal 100,000 square foot building. It's the most flexible. And I think developers, if they were going to look at this, would want to approach this with the idea that they have flexibility. So in that design, we show the five buildings. But what would actually happen is they would probably try to control that entire site. And then once the first user shows up for the first building, and let's say that's 100,000 square foot build-to-suit, then that would kind of set the ground rules for what the subsequent buildings would end up being. And it's important to consider the fact that any of these internal roads should be left for the developer, whether it's the central parcel or the north parcel, to try to figure out where the market is at the time when they start building the project. So I wouldn't recommend the city running in and building roads anytime too soon. Let that first project emerge and then you can go from there. But you'll see what that translates into ultimately potentially $67 million of property value. If you apply a cap rate of about 6% based on rents that we're currently seeing. And effectively, how we arrived at these values is we took the net operating income and capitalized it. And that would be a good way to determine what the value of the property is when the buildings are complete. And then we compare that to other comps, you know, like what the county assessor would see as the property value based on their own assessments. And then lastly, we built up a spreadsheet with the components that John talked about earlier. So we have each of the various product types, the quantities and then applied values to those. So at the end of the day, the land value, we think is worth about $12 million, assuming that there are utilities at each of the major three parcels. So not necessarily distributing the utilities within the parcel, but at least there'd be sewer, water, gas and electric to the edge of those parcels. And then ultimately, if they were fully built out, it's a value of about $94 million of estimated market value or what the assessor would apply. And then the next slide is kind of a, an abridged version of what you saw in your packet earlier. But this basically identifies what the city's tax revenue would be. So I'll draw your attention to the fifth line from the bottom where it says city taxes. And what we did is we compared what the taxes would be coming back to the city if it were as designed in the scenarios that we showed you earlier versus all industrial. And because of the fiscal disparities, they're about equal. So sometimes there's this misunderstanding that industrial is going to drive higher property taxes to the city. It may increase the value of the properties, but the monies that come back to the city are very similar to what, you know, you would see if you had a mixed-use development. And, you know, rather than get into all the details of that tonight, I would recommend that Clarissa or somebody in the city staff work with Tammy Abdal from Northland Securities, who I believe does work for the city. And we can dive into great detail. We can answer questions later if you want to get into that detail. This does a good job of kind of illustrating what the tax revenue back to the city would be for the built-out, finished development based on the images that John showed you earlier. You have certain financial tools that are available to you to try to induce somebody to come in and do development. And I'm sure you're familiar with those. The other thing we heard kind of loud and clear was that, you know, the community wants to be involved. They want to know why the city would decide to go in a certain direction. So we would encourage you to have, you know, a pretty structured approach to involving the community. And, you know, to the extent that you have staff time available to walk through the process, that's great. But if not, maybe engage consultant to help with those communications because communications are key. And one of the things that John kind of touched on is when the developers come to you with interest, they're going to want to know specifically what are the game, what's the game plan? What are the rules? How fast can we go? And you'll have a large advantage as a city if you can demonstrate to somebody who's interested in locating on this site that they can move quickly and that it's predictable. That's kind of the key thing. We touched on a few other things, but basically you want to make it easier for the developers, assuming that you want to monetize this asset for the city. We touched later on, you know, some approaches. You know, some of the big policy questions are, you know, what, how much does the city want to invest upfront in setting up infrastructure? And again, I would discourage you from going too far ahead of, you know, development as it occurs to hold back and see what might transpire. Because it could take, you know, three to five years to develop this and the market changes. And if you put the road in the wrong place, it might not accommodate, you know, the building that wants to be built three years from now. The guidelines are key, you know, making sure that it's clear to the developer what it is, your expectations are. And then making sure that you can move quickly when somebody arrives and wants to locate in Lake Elmo. You know, there was a question relative to the public works building. You know, that is located on a key corner. And if it weren't there, that would be a highly sought-after location by most people, particularly if they have an interest in a commercial or retail development. So you might ask yourself, you know, what do we want to do long-term with that facility? Do we want to leave it there and expand it? Or do you want to relocate it? You know, those are some questions that you might want to grapple with and decide before you go too much farther. We had a chance to talk to Jack Griffith and checked that the sewer capacity exists for what we proposed. So that's good news. So as I understand it, once the lines are extended, you should have water and sewer capacity. And then the stormwater systems would be designed as we move along, but that's basically an onsite design question. So you're in good, good shape in terms of utilities. And then I guess kind of the last major issue is how to move forward with this. What would be the way to implement getting something going on that site? And what we're recommending is kind of the second scenario, just get the basic infrastructure to the site. For instance, as John said, make sure you can get the sewer extended underneath the railroad to the central site. And then probably install the sewer water through that central site across 34th into the north site so that it's ready to go. You can look at all these other scenarios and be happy to brainstorm with you if you have one in mind that you thought might be your preferred approach. But in the interest of time, we didn't want to go into too much detail there. So, you know, in terms of actual next steps, the rail crossing is key. Figure out how you want to do the public engagement. You know, are you going to engage a consultant to assist with that? Or is staff have time to manage all of that? And then working with the county on that intersection that was alluded to, east of Ideal Avenue, because that could be a real game changer. And we understand that Washington County is supportive of putting that intersection there. And we would strongly recommend that you pursue that. And I think the sooner we get after that, the better. And then just make a determination on how you're going to represent this in your comp plan going forward for the 2050 plan. And work through your budget in terms of how much you want to invest in infrastructure before the first development occurs. And with that, we'll kind of stand for questions.
Thank you, Mark and John. So I know that Councilman Revoltz and I sat in on the, kind of the, well, no, I sat in on the preliminary presentation. So I know that Councilmember Holtz and I sat in on the, kind of the, well, no, I sat in on the preliminary presentation. So a lot of this is what we went over before. So I'm going to open the table to my other councilmembers to, for questions that they may have regarding your report or study.
So yeah, I'll, I'll just ask a little bit about, it was actually the slide you skipped over with some of the financial tools. So I guess maybe just my first question is, as you guys were going through this process, do you even feel like some of those financial tools are necessary for this development? Or is that something we don't really even have to consider in the first place after running the numbers, coming up with that design?
So being a developer, we struggle with this as we look at each project. There are many developments that are occurring without financial assistance from the city. So for instance, moving forward without TIF. And it will depend on the attributes of the site and what you're expecting the developer to do. So for instance, if, if it's your preference to not invest city dollars in building streets, that would be turned over to the city as public streets, then that might be something the developer would come back to you and say, I would like you to consider providing TIF to cover some of those costs which might otherwise be covered by the city. So it's going to depend on a case-by-case basis. The other thing that occurs on the housing side is oftentimes TIF is utilized if there's affordable housing components. Just because by definition, the developer cannot charge the rents. They would otherwise if it were market rate. But if the community wants to provide more affordable apartment dwellings, you know, at somewhere between 60 to 80% of the area mean income, it might require some TIF to enable the developer to build it at the quality you want and still charge the lower rents. So I think that's the best way to think of it.
Councilmember Dragicich?
So this study looks only at the property tax comparison between different alternatives. Doesn't look at other revenue or expense that will be incurred. For instance, you know, residential development creates a barrier to demand for city services than commercial. And if we go beyond the city, we have the school district and the county. And, and so, you know, I think it's a good comparison on the tax side. But I think if you could take a holistic approach, you have to think what was the total impact of the development? And then you can make up the best decision.
Yeah, what I would add to what you said is there is another slide that I believe is in the package that you will receive that kind of compares, you know, if it were different types of properties, you know, based on investing $100 million to make it all industrial versus housing versus commercial. And, and that would give you some sense of what the alternatives look like. And then you would have to apply your own historical data on what it costs for services to support the various property types, whether it's residential or industrial. But yeah, that's definitely a factor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holtz?
That was actually a question I was going to ask about the incurred cost. Curious because this, I mean, the mayor and I, we were on this the first two times when we tried to go through it, when we changed the land use the first time around. And something that we never had discussed at all was if there's a way to utilize the railroad in a positive way. We know there's a cost with getting the infrastructure underneath, but then you mentioned having a spur on parcel one. I'm just wondering, can you go into, I am not a subject matter expert on ways that that would help and what type of businesses that would be. So I'm just curious, what, what type of uses would that help and what would be the impact to that parcel and to neighboring parcels?
I'll let John comment, but I'll first say, we had a client when I was representing corporations looking for sites that needed to receive large coils of steel. And the most economical way to transport is by rail. And so they were basically limited to finding a site that had rail. So it's typically industries that bring their raw materials in for processing on rail. There's a group in Hugo that does panelized construction of wall systems and they bring all their lumber in on rail. So it's typically, you know, some kind of manufacturing that has to get their products by rail or it's preferred. It saves them a considerable amount of money versus bringing it in by trucks. Would you add to that?
Yeah, I, I think that's, I mean, that's, that's the right answer. But I think for clarification, you know, this information was really relayed to us by brokers who are dealing with those industrial companies that are looking for sites right now in the metro area. And I, I think potentially it's parcel one and/or parcel two.
That was my next question was, is that with parcel two, because it does start to slope upward as you go north, is that one limited in that regard for a spur or is it just a spur would have to be very short?
Likely, you know, grade is going to impact the overall length of the spur and the connectivity of the train to whatever building it's connecting to. And in our conversations with the brokers, I, they, I mean, they were, they were really excited about those two, those two sites specifically for the use, but more specifically because of the spur. And then, and then the concept around this, this idea of heavy industrial, which was explained to us as just actually having outdoor storage yards.
So a common concern we've had when we did a light industrial park in the southeast part of the city is the impact to neighboring properties. And so we all have a certain, something comes up in our mind when we hear the word industrial, heavy industrial, light industrial. What I'm hearing from you is, it's not necessarily a heavy industrial type activity where it's necessarily a high noise or a high, you know, vibrations occurring. It's, it's high in terms of materials that are collected.
Yep. That's the way it was explained to us. So outdoor storage that literally could be fenced in, in any number of ways. That could be creating fencing nets, you know, not so transparent usually to see through. So that's why, you know, I think conceptually we were showing that maybe more on the first parcel just because of its proximity to adjacent residential and that it's a little bit tucked back in. It's surrounded by woods, a little bit lower than parcel two. So, but it sounded like both parcels actually would work from, from a broker's standpoint.
And then another concern that I, and I raised this during the listening sessions, and I guess it is something that in talking with several constituents has come up again. As you are more informed on the market demand and in speaking with the brokers as well, in terms of some of the light industrial uses, is, are you still projecting that that type of use being put in now is still flexible enough to be in demand 20, 30, 40 years from now? Because one thing we, none of us obviously see is vacancy or something that's not flexible enough to adapt to the future economy.
So developers struggle with this all the time, you know. They, everybody looks out in their crystal ball to try to understand what is going to happen 20 years from now. And the best way to address that is to build a building that affords you the most flexibility. And so what they look at are base sizes, you know, so it's 50 by 50 grid for columns. Building height, you know, like we have a project right now, we're building the buildings with 32-foot clear height, which enables a lot of different users with a lot of different types of businesses to utilize the building. And then, you know, parking, making sure that if the first owner doesn't have a lot of employees requiring much parking, that there's ample parking available on the site should the next tenant come along and say, you know, I'm going to convert this warehouse into a manufacturing and I'm going from having 10 employees to 100 employees, that you've got the space for parking. So it's, it's a combination of site design and building design to try to make it as flexible as possible.
And then last question, I'll defer then to others. I mean, you're, this situation called for roughly 340, 350 units of housing. Was there thought to any additional park space within there? Obviously, these are very high-level sketch ideas, nowhere near any land use designation. But was there a thought that that would create demand for a specific additional park amenity within this area?
Yeah, that's a really good question. You know, we had some conversations with staff, specifically talking about park proximity and adjacency and the parks and who they support from a, from a use standpoint. And my memory serves me right, it was determined that, that this site really didn't need a, a sort of a design park, a park that included amenities like playgrounds and things like that just because of the proximity of some of the adjacent parks. And so the thought here was that, not that it couldn't, because there, there is, there's ample room, I think, especially on that most northerly parcel. But the thought here was that, and from the conversation we heard, that the connectivity piece was really important and the environmental piece. And when I say environmental, maybe it's more so from the standpoint of creating greenway connectors, creating spaces for stormwater management, things like that, that that was probably something that would provide a little bit more value, especially because in that third parcel, the most northerly parcel, there is a natural depression that flows through, almost through the center of that site. So it creates really a natural break between potential land uses. And to really maximize that space, what we were showing conceptually was that the lower part would, would be designed for areas to catch stormwater. And then the upper parts would be designed as places where we would put trails to connect basically east and west. And then subsequently, we would be buffering, so creating, you know, a minimum setback of a buffer around the parcel, around the edges of the parcel that directly butt to adjacent residential areas. And then most, I think the most dramatic buffer is really on that eastern edge just because of the relationship with that residential development there.
Yeah, I do see substantial buffers over there.
Yeah, what I would add is there's a significant amount of green space on the north parcel. So, you know, it's, it's over 30% of that parcel is dedicated to green space, either for stormwater management or just the way that it lays out. So I think it would end up feeling like a, a very park-like setting.
Yep.
As opposed to a real dense development or urban development. I mean, the flip side is if you go south of 34th, the industrial, those tenants, those owners of businesses are probably going to want two things. They're going to want, well, three things. Their, their priority is going to be, am I in a location where I can attract and retain employees? That's number one. And number two, are there amenities that are close by that would kind of go to the first point, which you have the retail across the street in Oakdale? And then they just want park connections, trails, so that if somebody wants to go for a walk at lunch, you know, they can get out into the fresh air and do that. But they're really not looking for large park-like features.
Thank you.
Anything else come to mind?
Yeah, a couple more questions here. I guess just the first one, what happens with the power lines that, that run through there? Do they just stay? What's the process? I, the last picture you were just on, I can't remember. And I know there's the, the red line that's drawn down the middle. I can't remember if that was trying to signify the power line or?
Yeah, the red line is another utility easement.
The utility.
Underground easement. And then the power line easement is represented in the drawing. It's a little bit hard to see, but if you look at where the retail is, the, the most easterly retail building is set pretty far back from that new street connection. That's because that's sort of, that's where the power line actually turns just to the north of that. And then you have that red easement that cuts through there. So it's basically land that we, we can't build on. And then the power line, a little bit challenging to see, but if you look on parcel two, where those two blue ponds are, basically on the east side of those four industrial buildings, that's the power line easement that runs north and south. So you can see that runs north, crosses over 34th, passes that one long linear retail building and then hangs right before it gets to that really small retail building. And so both those easements have been accommodated. You know, it makes the designs just a little bit awkward from the standpoint of building placement. But it does inform, we, we, we took that into consideration in, in development of the plan to make sure that there wasn't a lot of conflict. Now, ultimately, you can have conversations with the utility companies. There's going to be a cost, you know, for burying utilities or essentially moving utilities, like in, in the case of the, the red lined one, that would probably have to be relocated. I think contextually, as part of our conversations, the overhead utility was still being shown as is. We did, we did look at that red utility line that's diagonal through the site actually being shifted over a little bit when you get to that, to the single-family residential area there. So that line probably would cut south and then cut over through the green space and then go diagonally through the site. So that would potentially be something that would have to be evaluated in the future as it relates to the residential component.
Do you think it would raise the value of it a lot if the city would go about trying to do some of those easements, get it moved, buried? So there was not having, so we didn't have that running through? Is that, you know, from a developer's standpoint, you know, does that raise the value? Would the, the cost of having to bury those utilities be offset by the value of the property increasing as a result of that?
So the, the overhead lines as they currently exist today should not be an impediment to development. Would it increase the value of the land if they were not there? Probably some. But given they're there, what it would cost to relocate, you'd never recoup any increased value of, of the real estate, you know, with their absence. You know, this is going to be a timing issue. So it would be good to be in touch with those utility companies and ask if there are plans they have to upgrade, you know, lines or if there's a major project happening in the area that might require them to adjust the alignment. You know, you could get lucky and they would work with you to relocate some of that at their expense. We just had a project where we were able to have Exile Energy bury the overhead lines, which they normally would have charged us for, but because it was associated with the road improvement project, where they would have had to move the overhead lines. They said the cost to bury them versus move them is about the same. So if you want us to bury them, we will bury them at no cost.
Okay. So keep our eyes open for those opportunities. And then I guess just page number 38, the property tax generation. I think you mentioned that, you know, maybe this is more conversation that we have with Tammy. I, I guess, yeah, and I guess I'm seeing the one with all three of them, the pink, the green, the purple, green and blue, teal, whatever color that is. I guess just with all that information there, a, as you're looking at, what are your key takeaways? What would, what do you think are most important for us to focus on? The key numbers from those charts? I guess just a little clarity as far as like, as you're looking at those, what are the numbers that are?
There we go.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your last question?
Yeah, so just as far as with all the numbers that are on there, if you could just provide some clarity as far as like, there are certain things that you think we should be focusing on throughout all those numbers?
So at the risk of oversimplifying it, what this is saying is the tax revenue coming back to the city is going to be relatively the same if you do this mix of uses that we propose versus if it were all industrial. And with the Fiscal Disparities Act, it kind of diminishes the return to the city to go with the high-intensity housing. So if you look at the blue section, in the center column of the blue section, it is basic, or excuse me, it's the third column over, it says residential rental high density. Between that and the medium density, it creates the highest market value and roughly the highest total property tax. But when you go to the bottom line in terms of what the city benefits from it, it isn't any more than the other uses. So I think the takeaway here is that because of how the Fiscal Disparity Act is set up, whether you do industrial or housing, it's going to net the same result back to the city in terms of property tax revenue. Then the question just becomes, does it cost more to support residential versus industrial in terms of services, fire, police, and, and those kinds of things?
So where, on, on the blue one, where it talks about commercial, industrial, the, the FV, 15-year city taxes and PV, and it's showing around that $4 million for both of those. And then how come, then in the pink graph where it's showing for the, the ULI TAP hypothetical for industrial only, then it's showing that 10, 10 million of property taxes? I, I guess what's the, because it looks like in the blue one, right, they're saying if we did industrial only, it's showing that the property value tax would be, or the, the benefit to the city would be 3.95 million, where under the, the pink graph, it's showing that the benefit would be 10.3 million.
Yeah, so if you're going to the very bottom line present value, that is the, comparing the different types of uses, assuming that it is utilizing those different property types on 100 acres. And that would be the number if you extend it out 15 years.
Oh, I see. That's on a hundred.
Yeah, so that's taking it out 15 years and trying to put a present value to it.
Okay. All right, that was all I had.
All right. Nothing else. I just wanted to thank you all for your time and coming to present this. And, and just, just so it's, it's out there. We had, how many panelists did we have that got interviewed that weren't city staff? city staff or council members? We had people from the Planning Commission, we had people from the Parks Commission. We had some residents. What do we have, like another fifteen people, something like that, that were in the town and had the opportunity to meet with the ULI staff and give some input and and I I thought that really went well. It probably added some value to the thought process on this and we thank those people for their time and their efforts and and being part of this 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 study. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's an exciting project.
Yeah.
I wish you great success with it.
And then Director Stopa, just because there are people watching, just for our transparency as well, what what are the next steps that staff sees in this process?
Just bringing this to the Planning Commission and also to the E D A and having a discussion about this. I think the next step that was talked about is what does the community engagement look like in putting a plan together to move forward, vetting these options and with the Plan Commission and also with the E D A, probably coming back sometime early and doing another, we'll do an account.
Thank you.
Thank you. So item number two is to authorize engineering services for the twenty twenty-six crosswalk layouts. Mr. Stanley, City Engineer.
Oh, I got it this time.
Look at you go.
Who said you can't teach an old dog new tricks, right? Mayor and Council, before you this evening with an item, pardon me, to discuss authorizing engineering services to investigate, to to determine conceptual level layouts and planning level estimates for three crosswalks for potential installation in two thousand twenty-six. So we don't have a long presentation here. It's this is this is pretty much it. So just to step through process here with crosswalks. Last year, council approved a crosswalk policy right about a year ago, in December twenty twenty-four, that the city uses to evaluate whether or not a pedestrian crosswalk should go in. There was a request from a resident to investigate installation of crosswalks between Keats and Inwood Avenue. At a staff level, we were able to determine that there's really only two eligible locations per policy. Those locations are highlighted here at Fifth Street and Ivywood Circle and Fifth Street and Julia Avenue. There are three before us here. There's a third one that's that was, staff was made aware of a little earlier this year, who's just kind of been on the been on the on the board for us here, and that is actually up at off of Village Parkway and Lower Thirty First. So that's that's, these are the three areas that we're looking at. So the policy reads that, you know, there there's there's several things that that have to fall in place for a crosswalk to exist. And in this case, the policy says that a a key destination needs to exist directly adjacent to the pedestrian way. So here we have three parks. A park qualifies as a key destination. So in each of these three situations, there's a park, there's in, just to clarify, that Northport Park is a private park. That doesn't matter in the, within the spirit of the policy. A park is a park. So we've engaged with S R F Consulting. S R F actually helped the city develop the policy. And so what we're what we're asking for here is is authorization for S R F's services to evaluate these three locations. I'm sorry here, I'm getting a little lost here. S R F, their their scope and fee for this work is twenty, is just under twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. And again, this is just to investigate. It's almost kind of like the feasibility of putting in these crosswalks. What's it all take? This, the the funding for this this work is to come from Public Works has like a professional services contracted services budget. This 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 work would be funded through that item. So with that, we, staff's recommendation is move to, pardon me, move to authorize preliminary engineering services for the twenty twenty-six crosswalk improvements. The estimated amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars for the intersections of Fifth Street, Ivywood Circle, Fifth Street and Julia Avenue and Village Parkway and Lower Thirty First Street. Questions, please.
Councilmember Dragicic. So to come up with these three parks, was there like a citywide study done and these are the three most important points? Or how do we pick these three?
That excellent question, Councilmember Dragicic. This, it's it's based on residential request.
Okay.
So this is not an annual study that we're doing. This is just reacting to a resident request.
Okay, I just, I didn't, you know, I was confused as to how we got to them. Residents' request is very valid.
The the original request, it's my understanding, was actually Fifth Street at every intersection was their initial request. And per the policy, you know, staff does an, you know, an overview of before we, you know, engage with with, you know, consultant. And the only two eligible intersections per policy are Ivy, or Ivywood Circle and Julia Avenue.
Thank you.
All right. I think the I can't remember if this, were you here when the policy was put together?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
I just thought that the north point was so Councilor Holt could get across the street.
Actually, he lives north of there, so.
I'm east and thank you.
No, but honestly, on my end, I I would say thank you for that and for the feedback, being able to reach to this point. I guess the question I would have is, obviously, there have been other requests that do not make it to this point. I mean, and you'd mentioned multiples along Fifth. Have there been other requests throughout the city as well where, you know, it has been filtered through and has not gotten to this point?
Mayor and Council, I, so I personally haven't fielded one of these requests yet. It generally has gone through Director.
Public Works.
But it's my understanding that there have been maybe a couple of the requests since the policy's been in place. The policy's obviously very new, being only a year old. But there have been requests and the policy, I think, was in reaction to give, to be able to, you know, appropriately address these requests as they come up, you know. But it's my understanding there have been other requests that have just kind of died on the vine because they don't qualify based on the policy.
So the filtering process is working in that regard by prioritizing?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stanley, in your professional opinion, does this estimate provided by S R F pass the smell test?
In my professional opinion, Mr. Mayor, it does. We are looking at three different locations and three, three, three different situations. While a crosswalk might seem pretty simple these days, it can be, they carry a lot of liability and they can, they can involve various, varying levels of improvement. So in in looking at, say, the Fifth Street area, for instance, we have a road that's curvilinear, so we have sightline issues. We have a forty mile per hour speed limit. And we have four lanes to get across. So that really takes it, takes some work to look into that, you know. The, you know, the the crosswalk over in at Village Parkway, you know, probably a little less intensive. It's more of a neighborhood, residential neighborhood setting. But, you know, to to really get out there and look at it, you know, we, I will share with you that the initial scope and fee that came back, there was a lot of negotiation and discussion between staff and the consultants to determine the fee, an appropriate fee. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it sounds like this isn't just as simple as putting some stripes down on the street with these streets. This is going to be looking at possibly some lights or additional aspects than just painting some lines down.
Absolutely. Councilmember Hearn, there there could be, a recommendation comes back for pedestrian actuated rapid flash beacons. There could be curb work, ADA compliance work, adjustment to medians, things like that. It all has to be looked at and then it all has to be put into a plan at some point.
Any other questions for Mr. Stanley? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to authorize preliminary engineering services for the twenty twenty-six crosswalk improvements in the estimated amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars for the intersections of Fifth Street and Inwood Circle, Fifth Street and Julia Avenue and Village Parkway and Lower Thirty First Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on second. Any discussion? Councilmember Hearn?
I I think for the ones on Fifth Street that this is definitely necessary. I guess I I don't know if I really see the the necessity to have an engineering study for the Village Parkway, Lower Thirty First. You know, again, just looking at that, that looks like that could be a, you you put, I mean, very similar to the project that we did out here. It's not going to bring the price down that much. Maybe they don't change the price at all because they say, hey, to do this, it's going to cost that much. And anyways, I I guess that's just my my only thought is I don't know if that is a necessary intersection for the study. If if we feel like from what we did out here on Thirty Ninth Street, worked well enough with how we went about making making that crosswalk happen.
Yeah.
I do think the the ones on Fifth Street, though, I mean, there's going to be a lot to make. That's a more dangerous, more dangerous crossing. More variables there. Curbs that are going to have to change.
This is a price to not exceed, right? Oh, it's an es, it's an estimated amount.
And to clarify to that point, this would include doing the counts at all three intersections? Do we, we don't have those tools to do that ourselves within the department?
No, so this would, this, you know, I'm I'm looking at the scope right now and to Councilmember Hearn's initial question, I guess, is, you know, we need to follow the policy, I guess, is, I'll say, that's why we have that policy in place. And we've found that that intersection does apply and that this work needs to be done under it. You know what I mean? So while I don't, you know, the numbers aren't broken down per intersection, per, you know, situation here. I would, I would imagine that that intersection is kind of the lightest duty amount of work. You know what I mean?
And so would we be paying for the study of the traffic analysis? Is that, that's what's being factored into there?
Part of the policy, if you recall, indicates number of vehicles, number of pedestrians or bikes per hour or over a given timeframe. So.
That hasn't been done for this site.
No.
Got it.
Hasn't been done for any of the sites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And and we don't have that equipment, correct?
We do not.
So if if the if the volume doesn't hit those thresholds, then it would basically say, doesn't meet the thresholds for a crosswalk.
When would they do their study as winter is coming? I don't think there's really any utility to study how many kids are going to the park in January.
Councilmember Holt, I I actually don't have a schedule in front of me. I can circle back on in.
Could we ask that this be scheduled in the spring?
Absolutely. We can, I'll I'll just make clear that, you know, you have broad authority tonight to, you know.
I think it would be appropriate to hold this off until May when things are are probably a little more active. I don't know that we, it would be appropriate to do it during the winter months. It would be a lot less.
It would not serve the purpose.
I will say, you know, so obviously, if you look at the, if we click back to the map here, you know, some of this is preemptive and we can, you know, you can use, you know, counts and, you know, assume, you know, counts too or, you know, but at at Fifth and Ivywood, for instance, we know that there's the Inwood Townhomes Development going in out there right now. They're they're actively grading and so, yeah, if if we want to, if we want to delay the item for a little bit, I I I stand for council's direction. Right, right now, all we're doing is is we're doing that concept level study and and cost estimate.
Yep. Well, I don't, I don't think there'd be, I mean, the argument, if I was a resident in Northport, would be my, my speculation is that it's not going to meet certain counts to put in a crosswalk there. So if I ever was a resident there, I would say, well, you did counts when there's nobody going outside and using the park. Fifth Street's a little different in that it is a little more populated, probably a little more traffic pedestrian-wise. But in the same manner, my my thought would be that you wait until until May to do that. Anybody else have?
I was kind of laughing because I don't think we, I don't think we discussed that at all during the, when we were coming up with the policy, thought about that kind of variable of seasonality.
No.
But I I think that's a good point.
I mean, are we still good to go with this and just inform them, don't do the counts until May?
Well, we can, we can, I mean, I would, I would, I, it sounds like we're we're going towards holding off on the project until the spring.
Yeah, I think so.
Am I, okay.
I mean, I think we got to do it per policy. But I think just the timing of it doesn't fit with the usage and the intent.
I would propose to amend my motion to add, provided that the work is not done, says not done until May of twenty twenty-six.
I would accept that.
You need a support on that.
Need a second for that amendment.
Second.
All right. So do I need to have a vote on the
Yep.
The amendment? Yeah, so all is in favor of the the amendment that Councilmember Dragicic put onto his motion. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the amendment's on there. So the amendment would read, move to authorize preliminary engineering services for the twenty twenty-six crosswalk improvements in the estimated amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars for the intersections as indicated and not to commence until May of twenty twenty-six. I'm just going to call the question. Everybody in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll, same sign, hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Item number three was pulled from the agenda, so we can move into council reports. Councilmember Dragicic?
No report this evening.
Councilmember Holt?
I saw on the District Eight Thirty Four schedule tonight, they actually were having a closed session to discuss sale of the Lake Elmo Elementary. So I'll be curious if something happens. We'll we'll find out when they make it, if if they do something, it'll become public, but I'll be curious to know what happens there.
Sure. Well, last, was that last Wednesday, Councilmember Hearn and myself were able to, or was that Thursday?
Holtz.
Was that Thursday?
What did I do?
Wednesday or Thursday?
Oh, Thursday, yes.
Thursday, we got to experience the new simulator, golf simulators at Party Barn. simulator, golf simulators at Party Barn, which is, uh, taking place as opposed to where the machine shed used to be, and it was, uh, it was really pretty cool, and I would, uh, if you like to golf, go check it out. They also have full restaurant and, and bar, you can go there and watch football games or whatever, and full menu, so it's pretty cool. Councilmember Hearn?
Yeah, would have loved to be that, been there, but I was, uh, at the, uh, commission meeting last week, I didn't want to, you know, embarrass anybody too much.
I'm not worried.
But, um, at the, uh, commission, so I'll just give a little bit of overview, and, we didn't really talk about this at the meeting, but it was a presentation that was given earlier, I don't know if anyone's seen that by chance, probably not, so I'll just give a little summary on it, because there's probably a good chance that Mike Bradley is going to be coming and presenting for one of the workshops, um, about broadband franchises. So just kind of like a quick overview of the hour-long video. Twenty twenty-five, there's a case, um, out of the F C C, they attempted to reclassify broadband as a telecommunications service. The F C C ruled it wasn't a telecommunications service, that it is something else. This gave clarity, uh, on the court on what broadband actually is, or maybe more so what it actually isn't. Why is this important? Caused cities to look at this closer, because if you're a telecommunications service, state law prohibits cities from franchising a telecommunications provider, but now we know under federal law at least that it isn't. So arguably, under state law, it wouldn't be either. So if it's a cable communication system, which is what, um, is Mike Bradley, Bradley Warner LLC and the, the Washington, uh, Southern Washington Telecommunications Commission believes that it is, they believe that broadband fits into the definition of a cable communication system, um, so they, Woodbury specifically notified it, all their broadband companies, uh, looking to come into Woodbury that they, they need to get a franchise, um, as a result of that. Woodbury delegated their franchising authority over to the cable communication systems, uh, their, authority over their cable communication systems to the South Washington Telecommunications Commission, um, who then negotiated the franchise agreements with the broadband companies. Uh, they had two franchise applications, Gateway and Intrepid. Both were very res- responsive, they said Intrepid was, uh, the most very responsive to negotiations. Ultimately, they went with them. They kind of made the point that, you know, because of this, Woodbury kind of has this template of the negotiations that they utilized to, to get this, um, franchise set up with them, it only took fifty-nine days, uh, so it was a pretty quick process. Like the attorney mentioned, he does have concerns of legislation in the upcoming sessions, um, but didn't really elaborate on that at all during the, the video. And then just like some specifics, it, the franchise fee, um, that Woodbury is collecting is a five percent of revenues from the city of all the broadband services throughout the city. And then they just, uh, said to be, well, yeah, that's kind of the majority of it, there's a little, there's some question and answers at the end, but that's the synopsis of the hour-long meeting, again, if it's something that interested in knowing more about, probably worth watching that video, but I think, Administrator Miller will probably talk a little bit more about it as far as that might be something that we have for one of the future, uh, workshops.
Yeah, that is, that is correct, I am coordinating with the Cable Commission to find out when Michael Bradley can join us, so, waiting on his availability.
Thank you. Moving to staff reports.
Sure, so with the approval of our three new hires tonight from council, we will be filling three of our current vacant positions, so we're excited to welcome three new members to our team, as well as we are continuing to recruit for our Public Works director position.
When will those positions start?
Uh, we have One Building Inspector starts Monday. Uh, the P W Fire Admin is scheduled to start December first, and then the other inspector.
Got it, great.
Yeah, that's right.
No report for me.
No report?
No report.
No report.
Great, thank you, with that, we'll adjourn this, this meeting, this city council meeting.